Welcome to your City Commission's Special Meeting. Today is Thursday, November 19th, 2020. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live in accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act. The meeting can be viewed on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. Leavenworth City Commission's Special Meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity. To attend the meeting in person, email C. Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 2:00 PM on November 19th to reserve a seat. Seats are available on a first-come, first-served basis, and face coverings and social distancing are required. Comments may be emailed to C. Williamson at firstcity.org, no later than 2:00 PM on November 19th, and comments will be provided to the commissioners. First thing I will do will be to entertain a motion to open the special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we open a special meeting for Thursday, November 19th.
Aye, second.
There's a motion and a second to open a special meeting for Thursday, November 19th. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye as the mayor voted aye. The vote is five to zero. The ayes have it. Motion carries, so we have opened the special meeting. I will begin. Let me introduce the agenda item, which is a consideration of proposed face mask ordinance for the city of Leavenworth. The commission has called a special meeting to consider a city ordinance to require the use of face masks/coverings within the city. The commission asked staff this past summer to prepare a draft of this ordinance. The commission reviewed the draft ordinance at the July 21st City Commission meeting and took no action. At the November 17th study session, the commission had a consensus, based on the rapidly worsening situation in our state and community regarding the spread of COVID-19, to consider the ordinance again. I have a plan for proceeding through our meeting this afternoon, which includes towards the end, hearing input from any citizens here who wish to come forward and present brief remarks. I would also like to acknowledge all the citizens on both sides of the mask issue who sent me emails and/or called. I appreciate your input. We are going to begin with a video clip of Mr. Jamie Miller, Leavenworth County Health Officer, briefing the Board of County Commissioners on November 17th, 2020, on the state of the COVID health crisis in the region, and specifically in Leavenworth County. Please know that I have not been in contact or spoken to Mr. Miller in months. So like other citizens in the county, I viewed his presentation to the Board of County Commissioners yesterday morning on YouTube. In my judgment, Mr. Miller's presentation is a good review of many of the factors that led the City Commission to consider the draft ordinance. We're going to look at about 12, 12, 12 and a half minutes of this presentation.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Mr. President.
I'm just gonna begin by providing a county overview. This is based off of the last update on Monday. We were at 3,107 cases. Over the county, 1,961 are community cases, considered community cases. Forty-four are attributed to St. Mary's University. Eighty-four are residents of the St. Mary's Church, 24 are USP, two are Corso. Of those cases, 245 are being monitored as community cases. Six are St. Mary's cases. For a total of 251 active cases that are being monitored by the Health Department. We have had six currently in the hospital, and we have had 22 deaths. The current county positivity rate is at 16.3%. And the community rate, case rate is at 497.14 per 100,000. That weighs 29.07 per day. That's up significantly over the last few weeks. One of the things that I want to bring up is testing. The weekend of October 18th, we performed 1,147 tests in the county that have been submitted in through the state system to the Health Department. There were 66 positives at 5.75%. October 25th, 1,054 tests were performed, 102 positives, 9.59%. November 1st, 1,231, with 175 positive, 14.22%. And November 7th is 1,301, with 231 positive, at 17.76% last week. And that's what puts us in, when we're doing the two-week positivity rate, we're at that 16.03. Moving forward, we're still continuing to take on a significant amount of cases into the Health Department, each update daily. And that's in concert with the entire Kansas City metro, the state, and basically, if you're looking nationwide. We're seeing an influx of community spread. That is the biggest issue that we have right at the moment. Community spread means it's unknown exactly where everyone is catching it from. It's everywhere. Health officials, including myself, over the last several, have been monitoring. In the city, health officials have put out last week significant information calling to action residents to help fight the spread. The limited strategies that still remain are the same strategies that I have given to the public, given to the Board as recommendations. Obviously, social distancing and avoid unnecessary personal interactions, proper hygiene, wearing a mask, covering the nose and mouth when in public around others. Stay at home if you're sick and avoid large gatherings of people. Unfortunately, a lot of our caseload here in the Leavenworth County that we've seen through contact tracing and discussing with individuals that are positive, a lot of it is activities. Parties, holiday events, neighborhood gatherings, social interactions, weddings, birthday parties, things of that nature have really significantly turned in a lot of cases. Sporting activities also has been some of the cases that we have seen that have been linked together. We have seen success with the strategies that I mentioned before. That's schools. They've demonstrated a very good adherence to those policies. And when that happens, we've had rare instances of classroom transmission. Where we've seen it is when individuals have become positive outside and they show back up into school, and then they're exposing individuals at the school. What we have seen is rare occasions of when someone is in school, the spread actually starts from school to others in that same classroom or those contacts. Kansas City Hospital, Chief Medical Officer has also put out a significant press release last week. Our Kansas City hospitals, local hospitals, are saturated right at the moment for capabilities. One of their words, basically, as they put out in their press release is, "Hospital infectious control is at an all-time high. Hospitals are protecting staff and patients from COVID-19 spread in their facilities. However, the growing level of community spread is also impacting bed capacity by reducing staff availability due to the staff being exposed out in the community." Hospitals are growing increasingly concerned about having to delay procedures, treatments, and surgeries for patients who truly need them. Delayed or deferred care can create bad outcomes for patients and their families and the community. I think it's very prudent for me to also remind the Board that we did lose one of our community hospitals, which did have some bed capacity. So we are sharing those bed capacities when we do put out hospitalizations, especially those that need ICU and ventilator support. Are sharing that in the Kansas City metro. Just real quick, to give a snapshot in realism. October 30th, we were at 89 active cases. November 16th update was at 251. That's 162 case increases in the two-week capacity that the Health Department is monitoring. On October 30th, we were at 14 deaths in this community. And on November 16th, we were at 22. That's an increase of eight. We were at 78 hospitalizations on the 30th. And on November 16th, we were at 84, which is an increase of eight. It's important, I think, for myself to revisit with the commission that we need to do anything and everything we can to push these strategies out in our community to help slow the spread. The Health Department is, lack of a better term, taxed. We are overwhelmed with that amount of cases being added in and trying to contact trace, trying to quarantine, trying to isolate, making the phone calls, making the follow-ups, and doing everything that we have to do at the Health Department. We cannot continue down this path. As this keeps growing, I fear for what it's going to look like in the next several weeks, obviously with additional holidays coming into play and people in gatherings. I think that's where a lot of us are in the public health aspect, in the healthcare side of things, very concerned. So that's the overall report. I open it up for any questions or concerns that the Board may have.
Are there... I think since we have people on the phone, I'm just gonna call on you guys individually on the phone for your questions. So call on Commissioner Cause.
I have no questions, but following questions I would like to have on both of you on the phone.
Okay. Commissioner Culberson?
I don't have any questions.
Jamie, do we have the numbers to compare to adjacent counties that have had much more rigorous mandates and controls in place to see how we compare?
I just pulled, as of Monday as well. Warren County was at 18.2%, 167 deaths, 86 hospitalizations, and 5,784 per 100,000. Johnson County's at 16.5%, 253 deaths. And I didn't quite get, based off of where they're at on their 100% or per 100,000 mark off their website.
So those are a couple counties that have had mandates in place, much more restrictions on businesses, yet have a higher percentage. What rationale do we apply to that?
Again, gatherings and enforcement's the big one, obviously. You can have all the mandates you want. Enforcement is very difficult. But what we have also found is, what I look at is, where those strategies are in place and where they're working is schools. And we're not having, when we have stringent guidelines and mask usage, and when we have stringent guidelines, and I believe you all received a letter from all the superintendents supporting that as well, when it is being enforced, it is working. And the schools are a model for that in regards to when masks are in place, when social distancing's in place, when a lot of safety protocols are in place. It's working, and we're not seeing the transmission levels that we are seeing in communities. I don't have all of the answers in regards to... But I can tell you that a lot of, lack of a better term, COVID fatigue and people just not adhering to. If you go down into Johnson County, there's a lot of people running around, even with a mask on. They're not wearing their masks appropriately, and they're not wearing them. They're having large gatherings, they're doing things that, again, are gonna go... The numbers are going to happen. But what I'm looking at is the science in our county, and what I can look at to evaluate, and that's schools, where it is in place and it is being monitored and it is being put into place. I'm not seeing cross-contamination from when both are in masks within less than six feet, three feet, for eight hours a day of a positive. Those individuals are not being infected.
On the contact tracing, since you talk about fatigue, I can't thank you and your team enough, and I know it's been several months of this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ketter, for running that video. Yesterday's presentation by Mr. Miller to the Board of County Commissioners. I'm gonna present some information. It's not gonna take that long, but to supplement and reinforce Mr. Miller's video, this will be a brief review of recent statistics on COVID-19 spread and his public health expertise from Leavenworth County, shared by Mr. Miller later in his presentation to the Board of County Commissioners. There's some things that I will bring up, not in great detail, but just to cover, because we didn't see it here in the first 12 or 13 minutes. And then a few points made by the Leavenworth County Public School Superintendent in their letter to the Board of County Commissioners, and results of one of the most recent and reputable studies on mask efficacy in preventing disease spread. I will present facts. I'm not gonna present supposition. What I'm presenting here are facts. Okay, this is where I'm gonna reinforce and just repeat what Mr. Miller said. 30 October, 89 active COVID-19 cases, 14 deaths, 78 hospitalizations in the county of Leavenworth. 16 November, two weeks later, 251 active COVID-19 cases, 22 deaths, 84 hospitalization. In terms of the active COVID-19 cases, that is an increase of 162 cases, eight deaths, and six hospitalizations. The increase of 162 cases represents a 182% increase over a two-week period. The increase of eight deaths represents a 57% increase over a two-week period. And as of 16 November, he mentioned that the community test percentage, the positive 14-day moving average, was 16.03%. Daily case counts reported per day on the 16th of November, 14-day moving average of 29.07 cases. By way of comparison, from when I conducted my last mayor's Facebook Live Town Hall on 1 October 2020, the community test percentage, positive 14-day moving average at that particular point in time, was 6.67%. Daily case counts reported per day, 14-day moving average of 14.97 cases on the 1st of October. So, over the last almost seven weeks, the test positivity rate has increased by approximately 10 percentage points, and the daily case count has increased by 14.1 cases per day. Finally, Mr. Miller reported 497 new cases for 100,000 people, population, over the most recent two-week reporting period. This number exceeds the gating criteria for a red rating established by the USD 453 School District in conjunction with the County Health Department back in August. In fact, the number of 497 exceeds the red rating criteria of 201 or more new cases per 100,000 over a two-week period by 296 cases. This review of recent COVID-19 metrics are facts that back up Mr. Miller's assessment that he shared with the Board of County Commissioners yesterday, that community spread within Leavenworth County is escalating, and quote, "It's everywhere," unquote. And, quote, "We have to do something different," unquote. In other words, we must take action to break the ever-escalating cycle of community spread to flatten the curve, which was the mantra back last spring, and I would contend is even more critical now. Mr. Miller mentioned in his presentation yesterday, a letter dated November 17th, 2020, that the sixth School District Superintendent in the county sent to the Board of County Commissioners. I would commend its reading for citizens interested in understanding the challenges being faced by our school districts as the spread of COVID-19 escalates at an alarming rate. I will share two quotes from the letter. Quote, "With an exponential rise in positive COVID-19 cases throughout the community, student and staff affinances are increasing due to potential exposure as close contacts, in most cases originating off-school property, when individuals are not practicing the same public health protocols as they do on campus. The most effective of those strategies is wearing a mask whenever unable to maintain six-foot spacing from others," unquote. Next quote, "Until the entire community at large can support school districts with implementation of effective strategies to reduce the transmission of COVID-19, it will be impossible to maintain current levels of in-person activity on campus," unquote. Regarding the efficacy of masks in combating the spread of COVID-19, one of the gold standard studies was conducted by the KU Institute for Policy and Social Research over the summer and early fall. The results of the study entitled "Do Masks Matter in Kansas?" were published during the last week of October. Top-line findings were, one, researchers found a 50% reduction in the spread of COVID-19 in counties that had a mask mandate compared to those without. And two, masks do not eliminate COVID, but they significantly slow the spread of the disease. One last fact of importance and interest. Kansas Governor Laura Kelly is imposing a new statewide mask mandate as COVID-19 cases rapidly increase statewide. The executive order establishing the mandate that will go into effect at 12:01 AM November 25th was published yesterday. And I just wanna briefly review some of the highlights of that mask mandate order. Masks must be worn inside any public space or in line to enter a public space. They must also be worn while outdoors in public spaces without the ability to maintain a six-foot distance. Individuals who live are exempt, who live together. Individuals who live together are exempt, I'm sorry. Businesses must require customers and employees to wear a mask in any space visited by customers or members of the public. Kansas reported an additional 5,853 cases on Wednesday and another 60 deaths. An additional 130 hospitalizations were also reported. The number of COVID-19 patients in Kansas and Kansas City metro area hospital has risen from roughly 800 at the start of the month to more than 1,400, according to the Kansas Hospital Association. Counties with their own mask orders by next Wednesday will be allowed to keep local rules in place. Counties without a local order by then will come under the statewide restrictions, but state law still gives county commissioners the ability to opt out. Okay, I'm gonna allow my fellow commissioners, beginning with Commissioner Preisinger, to weigh in with any additional facts they wish to share on COVID-19 disease spread and/or the efficacy of masks to minimize the spread, and also whether they wish to comment at all on Mr. Miller's video.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the things I covered Tuesday night, and I'll reiterate here. The seven-county Kansas City metro area, which encompasses Leavenworth, COVID has grown exponentially. In the six surrounding counties that surround Leavenworth that circle us completely, starting at Atchison, I'll go around the horn, Atchison, Jefferson, Douglas, Johnson, Miami, and Platt County, they all have COVID mitigation procedures in place. Some of them to the point of being, some people say draconian, from limiting number of people in a space, limiting number of people in a restaurant, hours that restaurants must, cannot be open. We are not doing that. We're looking at a mask mandate here. Researchers at the National Institute of Health and the CDC estimate approximately 15% of the US population has contracted COVID since February. Now they're saying, in the next 75 days, between now and the end of January, another 15% will contract it. There have been more deaths since February from COVID-19 than there have been from suicides, strokes, and car accidents combined. We know Sweden was one of the countries that did not implement any COVID mitigation procedures. They said, "We're gonna go with the herd immunity." They are now saying, "We made a mistake." The chief health officer or the president of Sweden has said, "We've made a mistake. We're in trouble." They have now one of the highest death rates in the world. South Dakota's the same thing. They did not put in any mitigation. They have now the highest death rate of any state in the country. The American Medical Association, American Nurses Association, American Hospital Association are all recommending mask mandates. These are medical professionals, not a bunch of, for lack of a better term, QAnon or pseudoscientists. I mean, these are medical professionals in the field, and they recommend it. The governor of Iowa, Kim Reynolds, she was very strong anti-masker. She came out twice and would not allow masks, even during July. In July, she said, "These are nothing but feel-good measures." She changed her tune yesterday. She ordered a mask mandate for Iowa. I ask anybody, look at the Kansas City Star today, read all the stories. Stormont Vale, they're putting people in hallways. They don't have enough beds. Look at St. Luke's, look at KU, look at Shawnee Mission, which is now at Adventa's Hospital. It's in serious shape. I've spent most of my adult life serving in the defense and the support of my community and my country, the United States. And I think some people on one side of this mask mandate frame themselves as patriots or as freedom fighters. In my opinion, true patriots sacrifice what they must do to protect the most vulnerable. Ask any veteran, and I think they will agree with that. In my opinion, true patriots put America and Americans first. True patriots do what is right and not what is convenient or feels good. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Preisinger. Commissioner Leonhardt, any comments, facts, or comments?
Yeah, I do. Back in July, July 21st, when we had this meeting, this draft ordinance modeled, I had spoke out and said, I was not in favor at the time of a mask mandate because I wanted to watch the numbers. Well, I have watched the numbers, and it is out of control. They have just skyrocketed. And just all the facts, like that Commissioner Preisinger and Jamie Miller said on that as well, I'm not gonna reiterate those, but I think in order to keep businesses open, I want businesses to stay open for the health and safety of every resident and visitor of Leavenworth. To slow down the spread of the virus until a vaccine is available, these aren't normal circumstances. I know nobody likes them. I don't either, but it is time. It is time. We have to take action.
Thank you, Commissioner Leonhardt. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes. We all can agree COVID-19 is very real, and this virus does not discriminate. Anyone is prone to catch it. That's why I believe it is important for me to encourage the citizens to wear their masks while in public places. I believe social distancing plays a significant role in slowing down the spread of COVID-19. Good hygiene practice, avoiding masked gatherings. The only way that you can be 100% safe and sure that you do not catch this virus, stay home. If you are worried about catching the virus and have underlying conditions, I encourage you to please stay home. I truly believe this comes down to personal responsibilities. People have to choose to make the right choice. We can't enforce, we cannot enforce someone to do what we want them to do. There are several surrounding communities that have enacted a mask mandate, and the COVID cases are still on the rise in those communities. If the commission choose to enforce a mask mandate, it's going to still come down to personal responsibilities. We do not have the manpower to enforce this mask mandate. I do want to say thank you to Jamie Miller and to everyone in the medical field for your service and hard work. I have faith, I do have faith, we will have a vaccine. God will take this virus away, and I hope and pray the decision made today will not divide us, but will help us come together closer as a community. But I am opposed to enforcing a mask mandate.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Bowder?
Some of you have heard from me before. I felt several months ago that this was important as a preventive measure to keep things from getting so bad. We now have 26 deaths, not 22, like you said the other day. And amazingly, when this came out, that we were having the meeting today, I got a lot more emails from people wanting to have the mandate, and also even from businesses. I had calls from businesses before, but I talk to the businesses quite a bit more this time. They don't wanna close, and I refuse to close a business. I feel like if we have this mask mandate, we won't have to close businesses. I do not want, I wanna frequent our businesses. I work in United Way. I get calls from people who've been laid off all the time. I'm tired of it. We need to stop it. This is temporary. It's not permanent. You won't have to wear masks forever. Please keep that in mind, and I support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowder. When the city prepared a draft ordinance back almost four months ago, we hope that it would not be necessary to bring it back, as some of our commissioners have commented on. Unfortunately, based on the information shared by Mr. Miller during his presentation to the Board of County Commissioners, as well as facts presented this afternoon by me and my other fellow four commissioners, the commissioners felt that it had to call a special meeting to consider a city ordinance to require the use of face masks/coverings. And we did reach a consensus on Tuesday to have this special meeting, and that's where we are right now. And at this point, I would like the city attorney, Mr. David Waters, to provide an overview of the ordinance. And the only thing I would say, Mr. Waters, is that before you launch into a review of it, would you please just briefly discuss the authority we have as a city commission to require the use of masks/face coverings in public in the city?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I missed that last part of what you wanted me to discuss first.
Yeah, the authority that we as a city have, you know, in terms of our home rule authority as far as the ability to put and vote on and put an ordinance like this in place.
So, I mean, the ordinance before you, as far as authority goes, derives from your powers of home rule. Under the Kansas Constitution, municipalities and cities are generally allowed to... Under the Kansas Constitution, municipalities and cities are generally allowed to enact these types of enactments for the public health, safety, and welfare of their residents in whatever manner they deem fit, provided that they are not in conflict with superior orders of any kind. And so that is really the basis for your authority, is that you have that under the Kansas Constitution, that power of home rule. The ordinance that you have before you is based, and it mirrors pretty much identically the order of the Kansas Governor, which is number 20-52, which was issued also in July of this year. One of the reasons that we did that was to provide some consistency among other jurisdictions, so that as the mask ordinance was enacted and enforced, there could be a comparison of apples to apples, as, you know, as judges are looking at other things, or as other people, police departments or cities are looking at enforcement or rules, we could have some consistency among all the areas in the state. As you know, that this, the governor's order was not accepted by the Board of County Commissioners, therefore the governor's order is not in effect for the city of Leavenworth, but again, your powers of home rule do permit you to do this. The Kansas Governor has issued a new executive order that will be coming out. It specifically would not apply to any county that has already adopted 20-52, or to any city that has its own ordinances or regulations in place. So if the city were to adopt this ordinance today, even assuming that the county, let's say the Leavenworth County, did accept the new governor's order, that would not apply to the city of Leavenworth, so long as you had this ordinance. In fact, of course, the city could likely, if they wanted to repeal this ordinance and go under just the governor's order, if it wanted to, in that type of situation. Wanted to go, take a little bit of time to go through what the provisions of this ordinance, again, again, I think if any of you have looked at the governor's order 20-52, or this new order that came out yesterday, all this language, again, very much mirrors the language in that, except for provisions that were applicable to things like the Attorney General, Indian, Native American tribes and such, there's some language in there. Starting off with the new section 22-204, it establishes certain definitions. Face masks is very broadly defined. It can mean basically anything that you're able to put together that can provide a cover or a layer for this. So, you know, cloth, medical masks, plastic shields, those types of things, all would be permitted under this. There is no, it's fairly liberal in this interpretation of what constitutes as a face mask. This ordinance also applies to activities in what we call public spaces, indoor/outdoor spaces that are generally open to the public. It does not apply to, for example, your individual home, people's residences. This ordinance would not impact that. We're talking about public spaces, places that are generally held open for access by the public. And there are probably two different kinds of sets of rules, then, as where face masks apply, indoors and outdoors. When it comes to indoors, this ordinance provides in section 22-205 that a mask needs to be worn indoors, in or in line to enter indoors, any indoor public space. So if you're in line at Walmart, there, I know there are some grocery stores that have in and out, one in, one out, and things like that, then you need to be wearing your mask if you're in line to enter a space, or if you are actually inside the building, you have to be worn at all times. There are provisions where it has to be worn, receiving certain medical services, waiting on public transportation, or inside of ones. And then going moving to the outdoors, a face mask is not generally required under this ordinance unless you are unable to maintain a six-foot distance between individuals, not including those that reside together, but only in frequent or incidental moments of closer proximity. So, again, from a standpoint, this generally applies mostly indoors, but it would apply outdoors in situations where you're not able to maintain those types of social distancing. I don't want to go too fast, so if there are any questions as I go through, I cannot see you, but Mr. Mayor, please feel free to interrupt me and let me know if there are specific questions as I go through.
The pace is good, and I don't think any of us have any questions yet.
So what I've discussed now is the responsibility, what I've discussed just then is the responsibilities of individuals under this. There are also responsibilities placed on business owners, that they have a role in making sure that their customers and their invitees comply with this as well, and that their employees comply with this as well. That goes into subsection B on page two of the ordinance, where you'll see that the numbers that businesses or organizations must require that their employees, when working in these spaces, wear their face masks. They also generally are required to make sure, you know, take reasonable measures to make sure that the customers are also wearing masks in those, in those areas. So there is a burden on the businesses to require masks, and if businesses are not taking those steps to require masks, then businesses may be liable or responsible under this ordinance as well. There are a slew of exceptions to this, and those are set forth in subsection C on page two. Again, these mirror, for the most part, the exceptions that are in the governor's order. There's one exception that was not, that we added, that had to do with law enforcement, personnel, first responders, fire, et cetera, et cetera, where the wearing of a mask may not be practical under those circumstances. But let me run through what some of the exceptions are. And, you know, young children, children under five years old are not required to. Persons with medical conditions that may have difficulty, or wearing a mask may provide a problem for them in those situations. Persons who are deaf or hard of hearing. We're going to kind of through these a little bit more. Persons, if you're, you know, at the dentist, for example, and you have to, you have to have a mask off in order for them to work on your, on your mouth, a face mask would not be required, at least by the customer in that situation. You know, the dentist or the dental hygienist would be required to wear that because they would be able to perform those services with a mask on. I want to draw your attention to another difference in the most recent governor's order, though. C6 has to do with persons seated at a restaurant. What the ordinance provides, and this is based on the original governor's order, is that it would not apply where people are eating or drinking, provided that the six-foot distance between individuals is maintained, not including individuals who reside together or are seated together. The newest governor's order that just came out yesterday removes the language, "or are seated together," such that the exception only applies to those who reside together. We have kept the language from the original governor's order of 20-52 in this case, so I did want to point out to you that the governor's order that came out yesterday is a little bit more strict on that one point than what you have in the ordinance before you. A question was raised regarding basketball games or situations like that. I want to direct your attention to C8, where there is an exception for persons who are engaged in activity that professional or recreational association, regulatory entity, medical association, or other public health-oriented entity has determined cannot be safely conducted while wearing a mask or face covering. The Kansas State High School Athletics Association would be an example of such an organization or entity. In this case, what the governor's order did was basically defer that decision as to what was safe or not safe to those types of governing or regulatory bodies. And so to the extent that the KSH, KSHSAA has regulations as to when a mask can be worn or when a mask should not be worn, my understanding is, for example, in basketball games, they've determined that wearing a mask could restrict breathing, or get damp or wet, and could provide more problems, that they have not recommended masks be worn. So this ordinance then would not cause a violation in that situation where a regulatory entity has, has ruled that masks should not be worn in those situations. So those are some of the main highlights of the exceptions. Section 22-206 has the penalty provisions. We have intentionally kept these very low. These would be non-classified violations. We do have a sliding scale of $5, $10, and $20 for violations of this. Again, the purpose of this is not to, you know, just to be a revenue generator of any kind, or to, you know, or to really put the hammer on some people financially, but these are the, the steps that would place a power where we determine the appropriate penalties for violation of this. There would be court costs and other costs that would add on to these as well, but we have kept these, these, these low, anticipating that enforcement of this would likely primarily come in terms of education and all such, and that to the extent that there are problems with the wearing of face masks, you may actually quickly be able to escalate into other situations like a trespassing or a failure to obey a lawful order. Those types of remedies may also be available to police departments as they, as they enforce it. I do want to point out that as with any type of criminal law, there is such a thing as police discretion, and of course prosecutorial discretion and judicial discretion as well, as to the enforcement of these. So to the extent that anyone is cited for this, you know, the prosecutor would make the, would make the case as to why the individual being cited was covered by this ordinance, that person would have available to him or her such defenses as are available on this ordinance, specifically the exceptions discussed above, and then it would be up to the judge to determine whether a violation has occurred or not. So I do want to let you know that this is not a strict liability type of ordinance that would be, could be prosecuted, but there would be available defenses as well, and that would be up to the judge to then, you know, make the case and balance the competing sides of that. The last section, 22-207, I do want to point out that we have left that blank for the time being, and would ask the commission if you do consider this ordinance to establish a time to which you would like this to run. You are allowed to do an ordinance in that way, no matter what time period you do set, you can always be the prerogative of the commission if you wish to appeal this ordinance at an earlier date, if you wanted to, but we do have at least in here an automatic expiration. Here, we thought that was appropriate in the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. I do have one question in terms of the penalties that are part of that section 22 hyphen 206. These are different than the penalties that we discussed, what, two, two and a half, or three months ago, as part of the Uniform Public Offense Code, is that correct?
Yes, so the provision that you adopted for the Uniform Public, Public Offense Code, that was for a violation of a county health order, either an order issued by the county board of public health, the county exists as the board of public health, or through an order of a public health officer who, you know, he himself is permitted by law to establish his own rules. I believe in that case, if there were a violation of those orders, again, which I understand at this point, there are not any in effect for Leavenworth. I believe, what was told, that would be a class C misdemeanor, which I believe is a maximum fine, not necessarily a required fine, but a maximum fine of $500.
So that's not what we're talking about here?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions for, from my fellow commissioners for Mr. Waters? If not, I am going to transition to Police Chief Pat Kitchens to cover the enforcement strategy of the city. Chief Kitchens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. So we will treat this event just like we have traditionally treated new ordinances or new laws that go into effect. We will begin principally with an educational component to it. I understand that there's a great many people that are paying particular attention to our discussions and are very involved in that. However, we allow for the opportunity for people that are going about their daily business and not having the opportunity to pay attention, to get some educational component, making sure that everybody, as best we can, is aware that there is a new mask mandate and what those provisions are, and that sort of thing. If we then move to a, an area where we start to either receive complaints or see violations, traditionally we have tried to resolve that through voluntary compliance. I have great confidence in the members of our community that even if they might have some particular philosophical difference with the order, they would still, by and large, voluntarily comply with it. And then if that is the, once we've gotten past that, we would move to enforcement in the means of a citation, which is what this would be. Much like Mr. Waters said, it would be fact-based entirely on what the officer on the street experienced. Was the person wearing a mask, or were they not wearing a mask? Were they indoors? Were they in line? What were the facts based on that? What efforts were made to mitigate that? And then we would then evaluate the exemption portion. I would anticipate that people would be making exemption claims that were exempt for various reasons. We would evaluate all of that, and then make our best decision. I would expect that at some point, though, there are going to be a small percentage of people that are just simply going to be defiant relative to the, to the mask order, and those are the most likely people that would likely receive a citation. And again, those would be based entirely on facts, on the discretion of the officer, you know, the circumstances there. We would do our best to ensure that all those efforts are made. We rely a great deal on the public in all aspects of events that we're involved in. On voluntary compliance is a key component, and I feel very strongly that that would be the case, but I'm not naive, I've been around for a while. There are just simply going to be people that are going to violate the ordinance, either intentionally or unintentionally, and be the subject of a citation. We would hope that would be rare, but we would meet our obligation to do that at some point. It's important for me to set expectations relative to priority, okay? I'm not dismissing the serious nature of the pandemic. I fully understand and recognize how serious it is and the efforts to mitigate the pandemic. But it would be important for me to tell you that it is certainly not going to be higher than, say, a serious crime in progress, like a robbery or sexual assault, domestic violence, mental illness. We would prioritize these kinds of calls that we get from the community appropriately. We would do our very best to respond and deal with them as best we can, but it's very important to set that expectation that if someone calls from Walmart saying a person has a mask on, we just simply might not have the time to deal with that, and we would make that best decision as we could on a fact case basis.
Understood.
Okay?
Understood. Anything else, Chief? Any comments or questions for the Chief from fellow commissioners?
Commissioner Preisinger, Chief Kitchens, in your opinion, if this ordinance does pass, does this, will this, for lack of a better term, handcuff you at all? No pun intended.
In what regard, Commissioner?
I mean, will it handcuff the efforts of PD in Leavenworth? Is it, is it?
Oh, I see.
Insurmountable load?
No.
Is this manageable?
Right. We will likely get an initial sort of wave of calls and complaints and that sort of thing. We're prepared for that. We've been talking about that in the event that it happened in the last couple of days, when we started to hear about the potential discussion. Again, that comes down to priority and those types of things. The supervisors, the officers, would put this in its appropriate level. If there's nothing happening and it's quiet in the community, we get a call, we'll go, we'll handle it, just like we ever do. If there are other more serious things, we can, we will handle it when it's appropriate, but I don't anticipate that this will overwhelm us. We'll be busy for a little bit, and then we'll get, it'll settle down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments for Police Chief Pat Kitchens? Thank you, Chief Kitchens.
Yes, sir.
At this point, I would like to give citizens here this afternoon a chance, if they desire, and they don't have to, but it's up to you, to give the commission your feedback. Each citizen will be given up to a minute, 60 seconds, maybe a little bit more, but I am, I am, in the interest of time, you know, would like your comments to be, you know, given in those, in that minute block of time, but I'm not going to cut it off anybody in mid-sentence or mid-paragraph. At the end of each citizen's remarks, commissioners may, if necessary, ask a question for further clarification. Ladies and gentlemen, one by one, please come to the podium and state your name and address if you do wish to provide some remarks. Anybody out there? Yes, yes, ma'am. You'll go second, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Jessica Dalby. I'd like to address just two points that I heard. One was the commissioner stated, being military retired myself, it is, as true patriots, we would put America and Americans first, which is what I place my life on the line for. Secondly, yesterday there was a board meeting, and a statistic was placed that said, "Children placed in remote are more likely to suffer depression and suicide." The commissioner stated, "There are more COVID deaths than suicides." Therefore, that was not clearly stated, and I had several calls from several parents very, very concerned about that. So that was just another impact. In regards to that, those two are my biggest issues, as well as the educational component, because it is a strain on the community, it's a strain on the teachers, and they are all doing their very best.
Yes, Ms. Dalby, did you give your address? Did you get that, Ms. Carl?
I did.
Can I have your address, please, Ms. Dalby?
Yes, it is 2211 Shenandoah Drive.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Next? Yes, ma'am? Sure. Could we have your name and address, please?
My name is Peggy Bear. I live at 1917 Westwood Drive, I've been there for 30 years. My husband's a townie, Terry. I came here today, I'm going to try to read this as quickly as possible. My comments involve how a mask mandate My comments involve how a mask mandate would benefit businesses and medical procedures for citizens and business owners of Leavenworth, Kansas. Today, I visited my joint surgeon, who last spring had to stop surgeries due to the COVID lockdown. They were considered nonessential. I live in Leavenworth and my surgeon is in Johnson County. He serves our community. He doesn't want a repeat of last spring's closings for either his patients or for his business. When I told Dr. Salin that I was coming to a city council meeting here to discuss, should we wear a mask or not, his response was, are you kidding me? That's a question? He said it just like that. With the statistic that masks have created a fifty percent reduction in infection rate in counties where there is a mask mandate, Dr. Salin said, that's huge. If we cut cancer rates by fifty percent, that would be huge. That's ginormous in the medical world. And that's a medical term, ginormous. I always thought that healthcare was pretty depression resilient, he said, a pretty safe job, but when this pandemic hit, it was devastating. His office, the Kansas Bone and Joint Clinic, which does, excuse me, joint replacement surgeries, was deemed nonessential for taking up hospital space. For two months, the office staff took a cut in pay. All the surgeons did not get paid to keep his business going. So a lockdown due to spikes in COVID spread would mean, once again, surgeons like Dr. Salin's office would have to step aside in order to accommodate pandemic patients. Not only the lives of those affected by COVID would be at stake, but the lives of those waiting for other surgeries would be affected, and the lives of those whose jobs were being put on hold for reduced pay and surgeons not taking a salary in an attempt to save their surgical clinics. All this is a domino effect of people not wearing masks, which leads to higher infection spreads, which leads to more sickness, which leads to hospital maxing out capacity. So it isn't just about individual rights anymore. Not wearing masks leads to economic fallout that is just as devastating. People out of work, who then can't afford to purchase service and products, and then businesses failing. I agree personally that if people voluntarily wore masks, we wouldn't need a mask mandate. Unfortunately, people aren't voluntarily wearing masks, and I'm talking about indoors. I'm not talking about outdoors. Unfortunately, they're not wearing masks, and couple that with the accurate statistic that counties with a mask mandate have a fifty percent lower infection rate, and at city-county where the citizens have been given ample opportunities, several months to voluntarily comply, but the infection rate has risen the whole time, which puts the government in the unfortunate position of having to step in and mandate masks for indoor activities. So to reiterate, Leavenworth and Leavenworth County was given ample opportunity for months to voluntarily wear masks, social distance and hand wash to prevent the spread of COVID. If this voluntary work had been done, we would see a reduction in infection, but we did not see a reduction in cases. We've seen a steady rise. Why? No mask mandate. Counties with mask mandates have seen a fifty percent reduction in cases. Logical next step: mask mandate. I am a business owner here. I was shut down for two and a half months. It's been devastating to try and recover from that. So the choice is now, another lockdown shutdown or a mask mandate? I pick two.
Thank you, Ms. Bear. Any, who's next, please?
Susan Pierce, twelve oh eight High Street. I tested positive on October sixteenth with COVID. I tested positive again on October twenty-eighth with COVID. I stayed home all the time, Jermaine. I did do everything possible to not get COVID. A family member who saw that everybody thought it was okay to go around without masks caught it, and I kept the kids away from them, and I quarantined those kids in my house for two weeks, and we relied on rapid tests that are faulty, and a doctor that said, it's okay for you to come and see your kids again. So my daughter came and saw her kids and took her mask off, and the whole time that the kids lived with me, we wore masks all day long, except for the two little ones, but that when I'm homeschooling the other kids, we wore masks. So I took it very personally, and within four days of my daughter coming to see her kids that she had been apart from for seventeen days, we all got COVID. So the science is not, this is a novel virus, so to say that we're going to be fine is ridiculous. We won't know for years when, when, what we should have done. You can't rely on tests, so, you know, we can try to stay home and stay away from it, but I have no life. I can't breathe. I can't travel. I can't do anything. I don't know, I have COVID in my body right now. I can feel it. My heart rate jumps up and down. My fever goes up and down. The health department has released me, so I can go and do things, but I can't breathe when I do it. So I wish that you would have protected me before. I hope you'll protect the rest of my family now and let the kids get back to school because, and three of the kids I know had it, but they weren't in the count. So people are getting it, and they're not getting tested because they don't want to know, for one, because they have a group that doesn't believe in it, so they're not getting tested. They may not even quarantine. So Jamie doesn't have those numbers, and so if one kid goes to a pediatrician and gets tested positive, they just assume the rest of the kids have it, but they're not counted. So the numbers aren't even right, but I want those kids in school. So if, if we can protect the teachers, that's the better place for them. But if, if people are walking around and they're not testing, or they're not quarantining, and they're breathing, you know, they're asymptomatic, they're still passing it. But you can say, stay home, and I did. I gave up my life so that you guys could have your rights, but I still got it in my own home, and now I'm sick, and I don't know if it'll ever go away. So please pass the mask mandate to save the rest of our town, and condolences to the family of the students that came here to St. Mary's, to our town, and died. They sent their child here to our town, and she left, or he left, and dead. So condolences to them. That was Leavenworth.
Ms. Pierce, just, just for clarification, you are now tested COVID negative. Is that correct?
No, I haven't tested negative yet.
But the health department has said that...
The health department released me because they tell you...
You're okay now. I mean, you're not here now.
No, I'm not okay, but I'm...
I mean, by the health department...
Yes, the health department had released me.
Our condolences to you, too.
Thank you.
I can tell that you're breathing as labored now.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Next, please.
My name is Stacy Vega, and some of you guys know me. I own two businesses in this town, and I'm also a nurse. I've been a nurse for twenty-eight years, and I'm extremely disappointed in the fact that we have protests going on and people still not willing to vote for a mask mandate. I am just blown away. The thing is, not everybody can do curbside pickup. Not everybody can send you a clean house. Not everybody can mail you a haircut or a hair color or whatever the case may be. There's lots of businesses in this town that are afraid to speak up because some of the other people that are against masks are a lot louder right now. Loud doesn't make you right. Loud just makes you loud. Right is right and wrong is wrong, and the right thing to do is to vote for this mask mandate and allow us businesses to be able to stay open. The same businesses that have supported you and been there for you guys and done things for you guys, it's time for you guys to step up and do the same thing for us. We can't afford another close down at all. We cannot afford it. Do you guys not want to have a town to support, period? Do you want to see the businesses closed down? Because that's what's going to happen if you do not vote for this mask mandate. It is just unbelievable that we're still having this conversation. Every scientist, every doctor, every person that knows what's going on knows that these masks may not save your life, but they're going to stop, they're going to slow the spread. They're going to slow the fact that someone like her, it could be infected still and spread it around. I know she's not, but I'm using her as an example, because my father and two of my uncles, two of my aunts, and three of my cousins went to my eighty-second birthday party for my uncle two weeks ago, and we buried my uncle last week from COVID. He was sixty years old. He didn't have any underlying health conditions. He never drank, never smoked, never did drugs a day in his life. COVID killed him. So I just implore you guys to please take this very seriously. Let us have a fighting chance at still providing for our families and providing a thing for you guys to do in this town, a service, a place for you guys to go. That's all I'm asking. Fight for us like we fight for you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Vega.
My address is two thirty-one Cherokee Street. Sorry. I know you guys know.
Anybody else in the audience wish to come forward and comment, provide some remarks? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next portion of our meeting. Thank you, citizens, for your comments and remarks. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for the citizens who came forward?
No, I did not.
I just want to thank all of them that came to speak. I've heard from many citizens on both sides of the issue, many phone calls, many emails, many texts. I appreciate the calls. A lot of them are very thoughtful, some of them possibly were not, but I, you know, that's what we're here for, to hear from the citizens. And as some constituents said, you know, whether they're for or against it, we voted for you to represent us. Sometimes in elected office, there are not real easy answers, or you're not going to please everyone. It may be fifty-five percent for, forty-five percent against, or, you know, skewed one way or another. So those that you don't please, they say you're not representing us, when in fact we are representing everybody. We're not necessarily always elected to represent the constituents. We were elected by the constituents to use our best judgment in making those decisions, and that's what I plan to do, and that's what I've done in my over twenty years of elected office, and I plan to continue that now. And if a motion is made, I will ensure, whether I'm for a motion or against a motion, I will ensure that there's at least a second and that all people are counted, that people can stand up or the, all of our commissioners can stand up. We know where they stand. We, a couple times in this commission, we couldn't get items up for a vote. County Commission yesterday was very disappointed. There was a motion, no one would even second it, so I don't know where they stand. I'm pretty sure I know where they stand, but I think the people deserve having that motion seconded and let each one of those commissioners vote, so we know. I thought that was a very, I was very disappointed in that action. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Price. That's a good segue to what I would like to say at this particular point in time. We, as the elected leaders of our city, always have a responsibility to lead, but this responsibility is most important during crises. And make no mistake about it, the recent exponential rise in the number of our fellow citizens contracting COVID-nineteen is a public health crisis, the likes of which our country has not experienced in the last one hundred years. Aside from the commission's consideration of the stats, studies, and professional expertise relating to the crisis, we must and will consider the health, welfare, and safety of our neighbors, friends, teachers, healthcare, and other essential workers, and all our fellow citizens. Not infrequently in the emails I receive on the subject of masks are citizens who point out that people could just stay at home. We know, however, that many people can't do that. They have to deliver healthcare, protect our communities, work in our stores, serve our food, and perform other essential activities. In other words, they keep our society running, and as an elected leader, I and my fellow commissioners have an obligation to look out for them and the overall public good. Requiring masks in the public space to slow down and hopefully arrest the spread of the disease is one of the tools available to us in the public health toolbox. In sum, when it comes to the rapidly worsening health crisis currently affecting Leavenworth citizens, not to mention our fellow Americans at the national and state levels, I would rather err on the side of doing more than coming up short. Now, at this point, I am ready to entertain two separate but related motions on the agenda item before us this evening. And the first one has to do with determining that this ordinance is an emergency, otherwise we'd have to have a second reading. So I will entertain a motion to designate the ordinance, which is creating a face mask requirement, before us this afternoon as an emergency measure.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number eight-one-five-four declared an emergency for us to act upon.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. On this particular portion of the agenda item, we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes ayes. The vote is four to one. The ayes have it. The motion carries. We have designated the ordinance before us this afternoon as an emergency measure, which is ordinance number eighty-one-fifty-four. Now, the second motion that I will entertain is on the ordinance itself, creating a face mask requirement, which is before the commission this afternoon. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance number eight-one-five-four with an expiration date and time at eleven fifty-nine PM on January thirtieth, first, twenty-twenty-one.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on the, on the date? That is a date that I'm comfortable with. Any comments or questions from Commissioners on that? Which means it's a, it's a temporary order.
January thirty-first?
January thirty-first.
January thirty-first, thirty-one January, seventy-five days, and obviously, if information comes forward that, that we can, we can pull this ordinance if we need to. We can pull it back if we need to, but I think, time being, through thirty-one January twenty-twenty-one, seventy-five days is an appropriate time period.
Yeah, particularly with what, you know, hopefully will start happening with the vaccine, but we have a gap here between the worsening situation and when the vaccine's going to come on. So that's, that's why I think it makes a lot of sense. And there was a motion and a second, so we are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson.
No.
Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The vote is four to one. The ayes have it. The motion carries. We have adopted ordinance number eighty-one-fifty-four.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn this afternoon's meeting. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhardt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
An aye as the mayor votes aye. The vote is five to zero. The ayes have it. The motion carries, so we are adjourned.